Good morning to Larrabee County. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. The time is now 9:00 a.m. We are located in the Human Resources and Development Department Innovation Conference Room. And before we do, as we take up our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence thereafter, let us keep Ukraine in our hearts and in our prayers, work in the hearts of world leaders and diplomats, and incline them toward peace. If we can please stand for a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Today's pledge of allegiance will be led by Supervisor Amy Shucklin.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right. At this time, we will take up our action, our first item, and that is Board of Supervisors Matters. And we will start with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few items that I will go over this week, if I get my microphone situated there. First off, had a little bit of a scary situation this weekend in the community of Allensworth. I got an email Sunday night that their water system was not functioning, and there was no water coming out of their community wells. So fortunately, they've identified the problem, and later in the evening, the water did come back on. They had a boil water notice, but I appreciate the Office of Emergency Services and the CIO's office for the quick response, and also want to thank Self-Help. They are a very reliable partner, and hopefully we will work with the Department of Water Resources and get everything all fixed up, and that system will be back on for reliability for the community going forward. Yesterday, we had a Tullary County Association of Governments meeting. We discussed numerous items, but one of the exciting items I will highlight is that we are having this week a Highway 99 summit in Tullary that's at the Heritage Complex. That was actually a condition of the awarding of about $30 million to Madeira or Merced for their widening projects a couple of years ago, but then COVID hit. So we have to have this summit in order to receive this funding. But it just shows the partnership that Tullary County has with our Northern Valley colleagues in order to continue to further the widening of 99 throughout our valley and the counties that have four lanes still and not yet to six lanes. So that will be this Thursday and Friday at the Heritage Complex. I believe it starts at noon on Thursday. I will be meeting this week with the Executive Director of the First Five of Tullary County. We will be going over their office renovations at their new Sequia office. They actually just purchased this permanent office facility. They have been renting space in Visalia for many years and now have a facility that is theirs and will be their permanent residence on Sequia in downtown Visalia. Look forward to seeing that building complete and renovated for their use. Last that I will mention is this Wednesday at 2:00, right, I believe it's right here, we have a LAFCO meeting, Tullary County Local Agency Formation Commission. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Vanderpoel. Supervisor Shucklin?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a while since we've met and done this, so I won't, you know, go over too many things that have happened in the last probably month. I do want to highlight a few, though. On the 14th, I, well, I kind of attended. I participated in the Farm Bureau drive-through Valentine's Dinner, and that was a great thing that they offered. Thank you to the Farm Bureau for that. This past week, on Saturday, and I'll let Supervisor Macari talk more about it since it's his district, but I attended the Woodville Park reopening. I sit on the park advisory committee, so that was a great event for the community of Woodville. This week, on Thursday, I have my California State Association of Counties Board of Directors meeting. This will be my first meeting that I will be attending as also Chair of the Government and Finance Administration Committee, so I look forward to that. And this Sunday, I will be attending and speaking at the Tullary County Historical Society Annual Meeting at Moonee's Grove Park.
All right. Kudos on your leadership at CSAC.
Thank you.
We will go on to Supervisor Macari.
Well, good morning, everyone. This last week, I had a meeting with our district attorney, Tim Ward. I try to continue to meet with our department heads, and so I can stay in touch and see what their needs are, so how we can better represent them and represent all of you. I attended an Ivan meeting where they discuss environmental concerns and issues countywide, and I specifically addressed issues in my district. I know Supervisor Valero sits on that, and he works with his district as well. I attended a RCRC Legislative Update, and it's interesting, we have these legislators up there, and the update is, well, we'll see what the legislator does, because they're always changing their back and forth, but there's a lot of things coming down the line, and there's a lot of scary legislation coming down the line. So I really urge everyone to pay attention, study up on those, and speak up to your state legislators. And we and our board look at these things and either take a position of support or opposition, but there's a lot of things coming down the line, so we need to really pay attention. Thursday evening, I was invited to speak with a para group out of Porterville. My area now goes down to Poplar, so I actually go into some of that area. They asked me to come be a guest speaker. Friday was a RAN Board meeting. A RAN Board is for the LifeScan machines for all of our law enforcement. We have to have a board, have to have an annual meeting on how to proceed with that, so I've been assigned that task. Saturday was a Woodville Park grand opening, and it was a beautiful event. Supervisor Shucklin came and helped, and it just goes to demonstrate what we can do working together. There was 150 trees that needed to be planted, and everyone lined up. We did our ceremony, and everyone pitched in, and it seemed maybe 20 minutes later, all the trees were planted and the kids were playing.
Remember, the holes were already dug, though.
Pardon?
The holes were already dug.
Well, they did. They brought in an auger and they dug the holes for us, so. But it just still goes to show how quickly it went when you work together and teamwork, and that community will definitely benefit from that. So I was very excited to take part in that. Sunday, I spent the day in Tipton. I'm a member of the SPDES, and we cooked, started at 6:30, 7:00 in the morning, cooking food, and then we served the rest of the day. It's an enjoyment, again, to keep up the tradition how I grew up, and it was an annual matassa that we had. Those who are Portuguese know what I'm talking about, and it was a great time. Yesterday, I could not attend TCAG because I had to attend the East Cuiya GSA meeting.
Supervisor, I hate to interrupt you, but those who are Portuguese know what you're talking about, but would you please explain what it is for those who aren't Portuguese? Because I found this very interesting.
So basically, the matassa is back, you know, a long time ago, when you butcher a pig, everyone would come over to somebody's house. They'd all pitch in to help, again, teamwork, community, family, and they'd get it done, and then they'd turn around, and the next, next time it'd be somebody else's turn, the following week, and they'd go around, and they'd help each other, and that's how they prepared their meals and their meat for the upcoming year. So we did, we did, it's called squisios, which is a Portuguese spare rib, and they're to die for, I'm telling you. So we had, yeah, we had a good time. I had to attend the East Cuiya GSA meeting yesterday versus the TCAG because, you know, the State Department of Water Resources has done a pretty much unanimous decline of our groundwater sustainability plans. And again, no rhyme or reason, some of what they're doing, because it's pretty much a blanket denial across the board. So it's very important, and we're having to really work hard on that. And I would, any of you, a lot of FFA here, I urge you to attend these GSA meetings and understand what's occurring, because it's definitely going to impact our future. Tomorrow, we're going to have a, Supervisor Townsend, we're going to have a tour and a meeting with RCRC Representative Patrick Blacklock. I'll also be attending a LAFCO meeting. Thursday night, I'll be attending the Poplar Community District meeting. I introduced myself there last week, but they have a meeting coming up, so I'm going to go introduce myself to the board there. And then Saturday night, Supervisor Valero and I will be attending the Knights of Columbus, where they honor fire and law enforcement in Exeter from Woodlake and Farmersville Exeter areas. So that's an annual event, and I'll be attending that. Thank you.
Awesome. Great information. Supervisor, Vice Chair, Dennis Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. It's great to see you all out this morning. Thanks, Larry, for making me hungry again. I just ate breakfast, but I'm hungry again. Okay, a lot of things, because we haven't met for a little bit, I'll edit them out, but on the 15th, went to the Harmony Magnet Academy, Academy of Engineering Student Interviews. I do that on a, on an annual basis, and had another good group of about eight students that I personally interviewed, mock interviews, to get them prepared to go out into the world and to find jobs, and again, super impressed with the kids coming out of Harmony Magnet Academy. Then on the 16th, had a Mighty 190 meeting, and there's a lot of things happening. We're kind of getting off the ground now with sort of a bunch of swag that's been made that we're starting to hand out and getting the website up and funding in line for that branding effort and tourism effort along the 190 highway. On the 18th, was Tullary County Economic Development Corporation Summit. Very interesting time, hearing about some forecasts, well, about where we stand economically right now in the state, in the nation, and then specifically in Tullary County, and then some forecasts for where we're going, and that was a very, very interesting time. On, on the 23rd, there was a SETCO dinner over in Porterville, and I was the guest speaker that evening, just giving some updates on what's happening with the county, and took quite a few questions. So that was, that was a lot of fun. And then on, also, on the 23rd, a little bit later, earlier in the day, the Rural County Representatives of California had a Zoom meeting regarding the Water and Natural Resources Committee. I'm now the Vice Chair of the Water and Natural Resources Committee for, for the RCRC, and so we had our first meeting with the Chair from Yuba County and a couple of the staff members from RCRC. And then I also spoke on the 24th to the Springville Community Club, also a great time, with a lot of questions up there about things that are happening countywide. On the 25th, we had a virtual meeting of the Pre-Valley Voice Trip with the San Joaquin Valley Regional Policy Council. That's the eight Central Valley Counties, and we'll be having, we would normally be going to Sacramento. It's still a little bit closed down up there, a little bit clunky, trying to get meetings, and so we'll be doing it virtually one more time coming up here in a couple of weeks. So this was a preparation for that. And then on the 26th... And then on the 26th, the Manache High School had their Athletic Hall of Fame Dinner over in Porterville, and I was asked to give the opening prayer and also presented county certifications to all the inductees that evening, so that was a special night. And also, in celebration, on the 27th, there was, up in Springville, Lighthouse Chapel, celebrating 25 years of ministry in that area, so my wife and I were able to speak there and have a good time celebrating that 25 years with Pastor Farrell and his wife, Pam. On the 28th, TCAG and TCTA, as has been mentioned, and as Supervisor Macari just mentioned, we're excited to have Patrick Blacklock, the Director of RCRC, coming to do a tour of Tulare County. And then right after that will be the Local Area, Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, meeting. And I also, because Supervisor Macari lost some, his Mountain District, so I took over his Sierra Nevada Conservancy position, and we'll be having a Zoom meeting on the 3rd with, right after that, my Eastern Two League Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And then one more, on the 7th, I'll have the Habitat for Humanity meeting, and that's it for a while.
All right. Thank you.
Where are you having lunch tomorrow?
At Larry's. He's got that pork stuff.
All right.
At the Elderwood, as a matter of fact.
All right. Well, good morning, Tulare County. Last week, we held a Town Hall in Woodlake. I want to thank all city staff, Mayor, Manager, Community Development Director, Chief of Police, and Council Members for attending and participating. Lots of great information shared to the public about all things happening in Woodlake, and I'd like to thank staff for organizing this as well. I am part of the Central Valley Planning Committee for the upcoming Well Water Conference on Saturday, April 2nd, in Selma. I'd like to give a huge thanks to Denise England, our Water Resource Director, and Mike Washam, our Associate Director of Resource Management Agency, for agreeing to participate on panels throughout the day. Your indispensable background and information will truly help guide our discussion on water and economic development at the conference. Also want to share that I attended the Kings River East GSA Meeting last week, and I also attended the Economic Development Event at the Convention Center as well. I had a California Volunteers' Commission Meeting last week, where we discussed AmeriCorps programs and fellowships being implemented in various communities across the state. I want to thank Brooke and her team, along with partners like CSET, Cutler-OC Joint Unified School District, Family Healthcare Network, Starbucks, and others, who are planning Earth Day at Lead Better Park in April, and I want to congratulate District One's recent tree planting and ribbon cutting from this past weekend. Senator Melissa Hurtado hosted a State of the State and asked me to share a few words on the State of the County during our Town Hall format on social media. I want to thank staff for helping me put this together, and I appreciate it. I had a Yosemite Sequoia Resource Conservation and Development Council meeting last week, where we are continuing to work on solidifying staff within the organization to keep the organization moving forward. I attended the Young Lives Banquet on Friday and was very blessed to see so much support for this amazing organization, helping teen moms navigate life's ups and downs. Yesterday, we had a TCAG, as mentioned by my colleagues, and then I had a TC Regional Transportation Meeting thereafter. For those of you that are unfamiliar with TCTA, we are working to consolidate our public transportation systems under one umbrella. As of now, there are several cities that have operated their own public transportation systems independently, and we're coming together to really showcase what we can do as a county with all cities coming together. And so some of the things that we discussed were rescheduling a public hearing for 2022 fair and service changes, and then action to approve regional fair collection project with Gen Fair, among other matters. I also had a Delph Colony meeting yesterday, just talking with residents about their need for a community cluster of mailboxes as opposed to independent mailboxes in front of their homes, the reason being that there has been an increase in vandalism in their community when it comes to their mail. And so I was able to deliver signatures from all of the Delph community residents in order to make sure that they can get their community cluster mailboxes, and so we're moving forward with that as well. And then I'd like to share that my schedule for the week also includes Read Across America tomorrow at Cutler Elementary School, hashtag lead committee meeting to continue working on our leadership with our youth and our high school students. I also have a Latino Caucus of California meetings, and then Lead Better Park walkthrough for the April event, an evening session with the Well Fellowship Group that I'm a part of, and the topic for this evening session will be on California conveyance systems. And then the Woodlake Annual Awards Banquet, and then the Knights of Columbus Awards Event in Exeter, as mentioned by my colleague. And that is all I have to share. With that, we are going to recognize many of the individuals that we see here in this room, a great work that you all have done to this point, and so I know that Supervisor Macari will be taking the lead on these presentation of certificates, recognizing the 2021 Future Farmers of America Award recipients and schools. Take it away, Supervisor Macari.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before I start, we're kind of break how we normally do this. Normally, a supervisor hands it out, but there's so many, and because of lack of space and time, our staff here will be handing it out. I'm going to stay here, so I have a microphone. I'll read it out. I'd like to start off by thanking Dan Crookham from the Exeter High School Farm Program, Tricia Stever Blattler from the Farm Bureau, and Shay Hopper, because the three of them actually made this instrumental. It's taken us a long time to put this together since it was countywide, and we also figured that National FFA Week was February 22nd to 25th. This would have been a regularly scheduled board meeting. This would have been a perfect time to do this. So today, we're going, we will honor the students, faculty, and local chapters of the Future Farmers of America Organization for their achievements at the 94th Annual National FFA Convention. FFA has been instrumental in providing agricultural education to aspiring youths across Tulare County. The Board would like to present certificates of recognition to seven FFA chapters for their exceptional achievements, and FFA members who competed in the 2021 Career Development Events and the recipients of the 2021 American FFA degrees. So the schools that we will be honoring today will be Central Valley Christian, Woodlake, Dinuba, Golden West, Manache, Tulare Union, and Exeter. So today, we're going to start by honoring the seven Tulare County FFA chapters for their exceptional agricultural teachings and for ushering in the next generation of our Tulare County farmers. Based on the program of activities, award criteria, each year, state FFA associations recognize top chapters with gold or silver emblem designations. To qualify for a state or national award, your chapter must complete at least 15 activities, one for each of the five quality standards in each of the three divisions. The three divisions are student development, chapter development, and community development. Based on the chapter's achievements in each of these three divisions, each chapter receives a bronze, silver, or gold award. So for the silver emblem, we'd like to recognize the Golden West FFA Chapter. Is anyone here from Golden West? Okay, so we will take them their plaque. I believe they're the, one of the ones that were said they were having trouble coordinating coming. So for the gold emblem, we'd like to recognize Dinuba FFA Chapter. Is anyone here from Dinuba? Thank you. And do me a favor, just stand by, because we're going to take a picture of all of us here before we, before we take off. Well, we'll do, you want to do them right now? Everyone, four, stand up, and then we'll take a picture behind them. Let's do that. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Three, two, one. Got it.
Thanks.
Get a dog.
And if you would, please stay until the end and want to get one, try to get one big group photograph as well. The next will be the, we'd like to recognize the Woodlake FFA Chapter. Anyone here from Woodlake?
And also for the gold emblem, we would like to recognize Golden West FFA Chapter.
Okay. So we have two chapters that are, not only receive the gold standard by our FFA's association, but also receive a three-star rating. A three-star rating is one of the highest awards an individual FFA chapter can receive and demonstrates our FFA instructors' pride and commitment in providing the best agricultural education possible to the youth of Tulare County. A three-star award allows a chapter and its students to compete against the best agricultural schools in the nation and represents the agricultural prowess of Tulare County. So for the three-star awards, we'd like to recognize Exeter FFA. All right, so for, on our next category, for Career Development Awards, Ag Science, Fair, and Proficiency Awards, we would like to honor the students and FFA members who have competed and received awards at the 94th Annual National FFA Convention, starting with the Agricultural Proficiency Award winners. Agriculture Proficiency Award honors FFA members who have developed specialized skills that they can apply toward their future careers. Nationally, students can compete for awards in nearly 50 areas. So we're going to recognize Danae Westra for being a finalist in the category of Ag Science Animal Systems. Yeah, a lot of these are. Okay, so we'd also like to recognize Mason Haworth for being a national championship winner in the category of Wildlife Management. Mason's at college as well, correct? So Ag Science Fair Awards, the National FFA Agri-science Fair recognizes students who gain real-world, hands-on experiences in agricultural enterprises. Students use specific principles and emerging technologies to solve complex problems related to agriculture, food, and natural resources. So we'd like to recognize Marilyn Mendoza and Jeremy Frede for placing third in plant systems. That's third in the nation, so. So through career development and leadership development events, participating FFA members in grades seven through 12 are challenged to develop critical thinking skills and effective decision-making, foster teamwork, and promote communication while recognizing the value of ethical competition and individual achievement. So we would like to recognize the Tulare County, excuse me, the Tulare FFA Chapter Award winner for being national champions for ag issues, and this is, they place first in the nation. So would, we'd like to recognize Avery Coilo, Emma Coilo, Madeline Liu, Duncan Champagne, and Aiden Champagne. Would you please come up?
I'm Duncan.
Yeah, it says it on your jacket there, Duncan. Just wear that all the time, and we'll be fine.
Cameron.
It's kind of hard to play.
Can you get Pete in there?
Okay, so is there a representative from Tulare Union up here? We should have had the students here, because we also have a plaque for their team placing first in the, in the nation, so why don't the students come back up here, please? We'll just do a picture of all of us, because they earned it. Sorry.
Can't we just superimpose Jenny, like?
So next, we would like to recognize the Dinuba FFA Chapter Award winner for placing seventh in the nation for nursery and landscape. So would Jesus Gutierrez, Yvonne Cortez, Victor Martinez, and Zachariah Nelson, please come up? Next, we would like to recognize the Woodlake FFA Chapter Award winner for placing seventh in the nation for Meats Evaluation Technology. Would Paige Perez, Reagan Henderson, Jessica Henderson, and Isaiah Benavides, please come up? They had an award in ag technology and mechanical systems, and I don't know if any of them are here. If they are, would Sam Pratt, Wyatt Benson, Alejandro de Alba, and Ernie Murphy, please come up? Okay, we'll get their certificates to them. Their school. So finally, we'd like to recognize that we had, how many were there, 30-some American degree awardees that received it at the National FFA Organization. It's just amazing. So this is the highest degree achievable in a National FFA organization. The American FFA degree shows an FFA member's dedication to his or her chapter and state FFA Association. And to be eligible to receive the American FFA degree, members must meet qualifications as receiving the, a state FFA degree, holding active membership for the past three years, completing secondary instruction in an agricultural education program, and operating an outstanding supervised agricultural experience program. And service to your local community, leadership abilities, and outstanding scholastic achievement are also required. Is there anyone here that received the American degree? So we, I think most of them are school. You did? Would you please stand up and come up here? I don't have, want you to introduce yourselves.
District Three schools.
My name is Diane. I'm from Weyden.
I'm from Yale. I'm from Arthur.
Junior of Media and Health, my sir.
Boy, I got mom. Got it? Okay. So those who were unable to make it and attend, we will, let's give them a round of applause a little bit. Those who were unable to attend, the schools and the students, we will deliver the plaques and certificates to the schools, and we're going to mail to the. Those who were unable to attend, the schools and the students, we will deliver the plaques and certificates to the schools, and we're going to mail to the American recipients. And the reason we did this, this was such a huge turnout, I mean, we did fantastic, we were in a rock the nation, so I just was amazed, the board was extremely impressed. I know it was a little bit delayed from the convention to now, but it took a great undertaking to get everyone together to come in and get it coordinated, so I want to thank everyone coming and congratulate each and every certificate recipient.
Mr. Chair, yeah, go ahead. I just want to ask a quick question, I know, you know, FFA, you think of future farmers, everybody was born and raised on a farm, can I see a show of hands of folks who were not, who were raised in the city and just happened to get involved in the FFA, and the reason I know that, Ryan, and because your mom talks about it all the time, which is great, and it just goes to show the foundation of FFA and how important it is, not to the farm kid who grew up, but, you know, people who live in the city and take advantage of that and get interested and inspired and have done great things, so thank you to all the advisors who are out there who support those kids in doing that.
Quick comment, I just want to say congratulations and thank you to all of the youth and the coaches who are here today. It really is pretty incredible when we see the onslaught of regulations and on just being critical of agriculture, that these bright youth and the programs that we have in Tulare County continue to stand strong and move agriculture forward. There's a lot of folks who are, they're not very bullish on agriculture going into the future, whether it's water, labor, whatever the situation may be, but seeing these young people involved in agriculture, and not only involved, but to be at the top of those involved in agriculture, come right here from Tulare County and go down a road of continued agricultural involvement is really inspiring to me. I think the future of agriculture is very bright, we have some great young minds that are going to go into agriculture and continue to carry the torch forward. So I just want to say thank you to all of you students who have dedicated yourselves, congratulations on your achievements. I know that Supervisor Shucklian liked to brag about, you know, some district folks that are here, but I just have to say I do have the national champion ag issues team from District Two here, and I want to just really recognize them. I mean, Dave Catano, who was not up here, really was a staple in agriculture and education and ag and FFA from the time that I was in school, and I think you were there for 50 years before I got into school, so, I mean, well, I just, I want to make sure that you are recognized too, because it's dedication on the part of the advisors and the coaches in these programs that keep them strong well into the future, and I graduated high school 20 years ago this year, and to see that FFA in Tulare is alive, well, and now national champions, it just makes me so proud. So I want to thank all of the youth, all the parents, all the educators that continue to make agricultural education what it is here in Tulare County, so thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to Vice Chair Townsend.
I know we're all talking a lot, but it's just because we're all so proud of everything that you do, you know, we're always out advocating for agriculture in the Central Valley, we're always, we're always telling people in Sacramento or sometimes even in Washington, you know, how much, what the value of agriculture is, and that it is not only our economy here in the Central Valley, not only do we feed the Central Valley and feed California and feed the United States, but really feed the world from here, and so it is just awesome to see you and to see the achievements that you have, and as Supervisor Vanderpool mentioned already, the future looks bright for agriculture, not because of all the regulations, not because of all the things that are coming against us and the challenges, but because of you all that are in this room and are represented by these certificates today, so congratulations on all your accomplishments and keep up the great work.
All right, and thank you, everyone in this room who are here for the FFA recognition. Although I wasn't in FFA as a high school student, I felt the impact that many of the students that were in FFA had across campus, and I know that when, as a school board trustee, prior to this leadership position, we had FFA students come to our meetings and just teaching the life skills, the public speaking skills, the opportunities to be out there in the world and engage in community and to be college, career, and community-ready says a lot about the organization. And so again, kudos to all of you who received awards this morning. At this time, we will allow for students and families to, either you can stay or you can exit the space as we continue with our meeting. Oh yes, before that, we will take a group picture, so if those that are here can come forward with your certificates, and we will take a group picture.
Is Central Valley Christian here?
Jesse.
They are? Well, we miss Central Valley Christian, I am extremely sorry, come on up, and we'll...
See what happens when you put a sheriff in charge of...
If some people can kind of go in the front a little bit?
You got a dog in here?
In three, two, one. All right, one more time, three, two, one.
And then can we get Central Valley Christian with the supervisors room quickly?
Yes. I'm very scared.
I don't think there's any kids here, right?
No, but he's in Central Valley.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See everybody?
Thank you.
All right, thank you Larry for bringing that item to our attention. Next item is item three, and that is to present a proclamation recognizing March 2022 as Red Cross Month in Tulare County, and Vice Chair Townsend will be the one presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and yeah, besides all the great things going on in agriculture and FFA, so we've experienced quite a bit of issues here in the county over this last couple of years, especially with the fires that we've had up in our mountains, and we've had to have the response from many, many volunteers, including Red Cross volunteers, and March is Red Cross Month, and so we have a proclamation here for that that I'll read from here, and then I'll come and present it, and also a stack of volunteer certificates that can be presented at the upcoming luncheon. And so I will read this, recognizing March 2022 as Red Cross Month, whereas in times of crisis, people in Tulare County come together to care for one another, and this humanitarian spirit is exemplified by the American Red Cross volunteers and donors, and whereas in 1881 Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating suffering, and whereas 140 years after the founding of the Red Cross, volunteers local and worldwide give back to communities to follow Clara Barton's legacy to never think of anyone except the need and how to meet it. I should say never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. And whereas we honor the volunteers and contributions of donors who carry out the mission of the Red Cross and give hope to the most vulnerable, whether it is providing emergency shelter, food, comfort for families during disasters, supporting service members and veterans, saving lives in the field with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid, and whereas we recognize this work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to the resilience of our communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize March 2022 as Red Cross Month in Tulare County. The Board calls upon all residents to recognize the humanitarian mission of the Red Cross, it's dated March 1st, 2022, signed by Larry McCary, Supervisor Larry McCary, Supervisor Pete Vanderpool, Supervisor Amy Shucklian, Chair Eddie Valero, and Vice Chair Dennis Townsend. And Lori, if you can come up and I'll make this presentation.
It's a perfect spot, Dennis.
Is that right?
Right.
Well, I picked a really good day to be here, I, all those kids that just left, they are amazing, and they're definitely the future leaders, so it's very humbling to be able to be included today. Thank you so much for this. I would love to take the credit for everything the Red Cross does, but it really is our volunteers, we, 90% of the work is done by volunteers, so when we had the SQF complex fire, and when we had the windy fire this last year, it was volunteers from here and from all over the country that came to help, all of the desire to just do what's right for other people and help them when they need it the most, so it's really on their behalf, thank you for this, and thank you for the certificates recognizing the hard work of some of our even more dedicated volunteers, those that really, really do go above and beyond, so thank you so much. Have a great day, you guys.
Thank you Lori.
Thank you Lori.
All right. We are going to move on to public comment, and so I will read that members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Board at this time. Board will be, person addressing the Board will be limited to a maximum of three minutes so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. At all times, please use a microphone and state your name for the record. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak at this time? Thank you Tammy.
Good morning Chairman, Board Members, CAO, County Council, and Clerk of the Board, Tammy Wyker-Adkins, your Chief of Staff. Today, I just want to introduce someone who you already know because he's been on your staff for a little while now, but you recently granted him a promotion to Board Representative, and that is Patrick Burks, please come on up.
Good morning Board, good morning citizens of Tulare County, pleased to be here, pleased to have the opportunity to serve as a Board Rep and Bodyguard for...
Congratulations. Any public comment in this room? All right, our Ag Commissioner, Tom Tucker.
Mr. Chair, good morning Board, Supervisors, good to be here, Tom Tucker, Ag Commissioner. Just wanted to tell you that I too am, I agree with each of you and all the comments about our Future Farmers of America and all of those that were here today, that was encouraging to see the youth as they come up and learn so much about what agriculture is here, and agribusiness for that matter, and because they are college-bound from my understanding, the majority of them anyway. So, anyway, thank you for letting me say that, but if I can switch shoes just one moment, I am also your Sealer of Weights and Measures, and with that, I wanted to thank you for your support and for, and all that you do, and for me and the support of my staff, and as we recognize Weights and Measures Week, it becomes more in our minds of what we do. You know, we're out there, my staff are checking every weighing and measuring device throughout the county, we're trying to make sure that everybody receives an equitable, fair deal, whether they are a business selling a product or a commodity, or whether they are a consumer purchasing those very things. So it's, it's good, we appreciate your support and that of the community as well, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Tom, do you think you could come to my house? I think my scale is off, it's weighing too heavy, so it needs to be recalibrated.
I'm sure we can fix that, yeah.
All right, well, happy Weights and Measures Week. Any members of the public wishing to speak at this time here in chambers? All right, we're going to transition over to phone and Zoom, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Pamela Silva? Pamela, are you there? Please unmute your mic, Pamela? Are you there? One second.
We're working on any technical difficulty?
Pam, are you there?
Pam? Can you hear it, Pam?
I can hear you, yes.
All right.
Oh my, oh my goodness, okay, that was fun. There you go. Good morning, good morning Board of Supervisors, I am calling on just, just as a whole total of what's going on. Now we know that there's a few things on the agenda regarding Sacramento and the bills they want to pass, now they've already, they've already passed some bills that have gone against our rights, and you guys are going to, I guess, double down on it, saying that that's the, that's the law. At what point do we say no more, and say, you know, this is, this is going against everybody's rights, not just the children or the adults, but everybody, and for time to come? And I sent you all a PDF of a patent by Bill Gates, it's 060606 in there somewhere, but yeah, that's their endgame, that they would like to use this all, and I know it sounds, oh, it's a conspiracy theory, no, this, this exists, go look at, go look at the document, they are actually wanting to do this. So I say we be proactive and not reactive to what they're putting in, let's make a law that says you can't make somebody show their personal medical information to just anybody you ask to. How about we do that? We say, no, you cannot ask me if I'm vaccinated for an experimental vaccine. and the cardiologist was aghast at how many young, healthy athletes that are coming in with heart problems. This is real. It's happening. And if you look at all the obituaries, there are many obituaries of very young people that shouldn't have gone. And it's a sad thing when, you know, we watch this happen. So I, I implore you to look at the facts, see what's going on. You don't have to be a conspiracy theorist. You just have to look at the facts. And let's take care of where we're at now and protect the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Madam Clerk, do we have any other comments?
We have no other callers.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes public comment. We will now move on to our timed items, our, our 9:30 AM timed items. And we will start with--
Mr. Chair, can we consent?
Oh, yes, consent, sorry. All right. So we are at consent, and so these items are routine and usually approved by one motion. Before action by the Board, the Chair will ask the Board Members and the public if they wish to remove any items from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Items removed from the consent calendar may be heard immediately, immediately before or after the approval of the consent calendar. And so as of now, we have received some for, uh, separate consideration, and that is number nine, number 11, number 12, and number 27. Do we have any other items to be pulled by colleagues or the public?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't want it pulled, but I'd like to just be able to make a comment on, actually, on a couple of them, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. I just want to make a comment on those.
Okay. And then you said, 13, 14, 15, and 18. Oh, no.
16, 17, and 18.
Okay, 16, 17, and 18. Okay.
You, you can go ahead and make the comment.
Yeah, can you make them now, since those are not to be pulled?
I would just like to, on, on, on the items 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, I would like to thank everyone who's stepping forward to get appointed on these boards and get reappointed. And regarding item 13, I want to personally thank Steve Melonesio for agreeing to be a representative on East Coia GSA. We needed to find an appointment there, and it's been quite a, a task. And so Mr. Melonesio stepped up. But, you know, so, so far off, and we hear people that want to complain and not want to get involved, I just want to thank everybody. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor McCary, for those comments. Any others from colleagues? How about from the public?
No.
Okay. So I need a motion for the--
I would move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar minus items that were pulled by the public.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shacklean.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We will now take up item number nine.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, CAO, and County Council. Item number nine is a request that the Board of Supervisors approve a letter of opposition to Senate Bill 866 regarding the allowance of minors aged 12 years old and up to consent to vaccines that meet specified federal agency criteria, and the allowance of vaccine providers to administer the vaccines that are being proposed by this bill.
Mr. Chair, we do have two callers. Pamela Silva?
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay. It's hard to know. Yeah, this is a clear indication that we have problems coming down from Sacramento. As I stated earlier in public comment, if they pass this, our children are, aren't ours anymore. It's, it's already happening with the masks, where our children are being harmed physically and emotionally, their education. We need to do more than just send them something, saying, no, we don't want this. No, you need to stand and say, no, we will not take this. The people of Tulare County, people of California that aren't in the big cities, who haven't been brainwashed by the media, and, you know, you got these big cities, they're gonna get crack pipes, they're gonna love Joe Biden, they might vote for him again. But we can't do this. We literally cannot allow the state to tell us to poison our children, to mask them, to cause them harm and abuse. There needs to be a clear delineation between the state of California, us, and our children. And I'm expecting our county, because you make the laws in the county, to step up and say, no, we will block this. Just like the schools, they're saying, no, we can't do anything. We can't do anything, because it's, it's, it's a mandate. Well, there's already laws that are coming across, like, like the, the one that's on the agenda, and I'll talk about that one, the AB 361. It's taking away our rights. We will not consent. We will not comply. You can't take away our rights. They are inalienable. You can't, you can't. We don't, we don't accept it. So by you saying, yeah, we're just gonna do this because we're, we're allowed to, I don't care. It doesn't matter. Those are my rights, given to me by our Lord, our Creator, Jesus Christ, God Almighty, our Holy Father, and God we trust. Now, you all took an oath to, to the Constitution, and I know the Constitution says that AB 361 is unconstitutional. Fight back, please. For the sake of humanity, fight back. We're asking you to. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We have another caller.
Yes, Jimmy Mallow.
Jimmy Mallow, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right on. Okay, again, my name is Jimmy Malloy, and I'm from District 2. Thank you Supervisor Vanderpool. And I just wanted to address this. I actually didn't want it pulled out for consideration. I, I wanted to address it during public comment, but that's fine. You know, this, this bill obviously is simply crazy. Any of us who've had 12-year-olds know that most of them should never, under any circumstances, be allowed to make life-altering decisions without parental involvement. So I just wanted to say thank you for drafting this letter. Wasn't made aware of it until this morning, which kind of brought me to my next point. I would love to see, because this is the county taking a stand on something that's happening in Sacramento, I'd love to see some sort of public awareness campaign go out from you guys, even if it's just an email to constituents, or however you would go about presenting that to everybody. That way, we can get involved. Because obviously, it's important that the, the county send a letter like this, but also that citizens do. And most citizens are at work right now, at school right now, at, you know, different places. They don't know what's going on in this board meeting. And so, you know, getting this out to, you know, the, the soccer mom who's trying to run out to practices and doing all this is critical when it comes to defeating these kinds of bills. So I would say thank you and kudos for doing this letter, but also we'd love to see some sort of awareness campaign sent out for things like this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers?
We have no other callers.
Okay. Any additional comments from the public? Okay. Question for Clerk and Council. Do we take up each item separately with a vote, or do we hear all of them and then take a vote?
You, you should take them up separately with a vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, given that, I just wanted to make a comment on item number nine. Appreciate this being put on the Board's agenda, that is something that I requested a few weeks ago, and I'm happy to see this here, and I hope that we will all support this and continue to fight on behalf of our children who don't often have the voices to speak up on their own. And based on that, I would move for approval of this letter.
I'll second. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
The motion was by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Townsend. Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shacklean.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We are going to take up item 11.
Item 11 is a request that the Board of Supervisors approve a letter of opposition to Senate Bill 871 in regard to the removal of the personal belief exemption and the addition of the COVID-19 vaccine to the list of required vaccinations a child must have prior to admittance to any public or private elementary or secondary school, childcare center, day nursery, nursery school, family daycare home, or development center that the bill proposes.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from the public?
We have a caller.
And we have a caller. Okay.
Pamela Silva.
Hello. Yeah, um, this is another letter that does need to go out, and I would like to see stronger language. We know this is harming children. We've seen young children die of strokes, heart attacks. It's not normal. And again, I would say we need stronger language and maybe a law saying that we have the right to our children, and that any law that goes against the Constitution and our rights given to us, afforded to us by God and the Constitution. That, we uphold Marbury versus Madison. I know it's an old thing, but it, it states that any law that is repugnant to the Constitution is null and void. And here we are, fighting for our kids. We would have to go into what federal court to fight this? And it's an ongoing onslaught against our rights. I don't see how we, as individual citizens, or even as a group, could afford to fight, because they have our taxpayer dollars. They're using it against us. We're at war with our own government. And I would like to see, you know, or at least our local representatives acknowledge that. And I think you are, but I think it's time to be proactive and do something harder against what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Do we have any additional comments at this time?
Jimmy Malloy.
Jimmy, you, can you hear us?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Okay, again, this is one I was gonna lump together during public comment. Again, this, this obviously is another bill that is just a bad deal. And the biggest part of it, you know, SB 277, which passed years ago, which basically had the list of required vaccines for kids, allowed for any additional vaccines that were added to the list to, it required, I should say, required there to be a personal belief exemption. This bill would remove that kind of arbitrarily for a vaccine that we still have questions about, you know, for sure in the long term. You guys put that in the letter, which is great. I appreciate that. And again, I would just say public awareness is the biggest thing. So not that you guys are trying to do anything under dark of night, or sleight of hand, or anything like that, but, you know, there'll be probably hundreds of thousands of people in Tulare County that will have no idea that you're sending out these letters, unless they are attending these meetings, and there's only a handful of us who are. So, you know, getting this out there to the public, if you really want to see something done about it, it's gonna take those hundreds of thousands of people to reach out to their, their congresspeople and really raise a stink. So, you know, whatever can be done, I'd be happy to assist in that. We do have our Unmasked Tulare County platform that can reach several thousand people with stuff like this. We will be sharing it. But I'd love to reach out to anybody offline to figure out how we could assist and get any information out there as well. So thank you guys for what you're doing. We appreciate you. And that's it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, any other comments?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. With that, I bring him back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, a couple of comments on this. Thank you, first of all, for having this placed on the agenda, as I requested a couple of weeks ago, same as our previous item, SB 866. SB 871, you know, we, we can debate the COVID vaccine and its merits, especially for school-aged children and having it be required for schools. That, that's one thing, and there can be questions. And, you know, I know that's been highlighted, but one, one item here that I really am strongly standing firm against is the removal of the personal belief exemption. You know, giving people a choice, especially for something of this magnitude where there are questions being raised, removing that exemption and not allowing people to choose to not have their kids vaccinated in order to attend school in the state of California is absolutely ridiculous. And I, I can't even believe this is even being considered by the legislature. I strongly move for approval of this item to send this letter of opposition.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to just echo those comments of Supervisor Vanderpool. And I know that several of us, when we saw these come across, asked staff to put letters together, and I'd also like to commend staff for putting together these great letters, and, and sort of apologize on behalf of everyone for having to make you do so many. But the, the state legislature just keeps pushing these things out. So I suspect that we're going to keep asking you to do more of these. So it's great that we've got more good people coming on to help with that as well. So I would, with that, I'd like to second Supervisor Vanderpool's motion.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? In today's day and age of no child left behind and talking about education, and to use these kind of bills to preclude a child from getting an education, it, to me, is just absurd. It is all over the media that absenteeism in schools are just through the roof, because people are not sending their children to school, children refusing to go because of the masks. People, children are crying and traumatized by this. Again, I believe that there's a pandemic, I believe is going on, but at what risk to our children? And it's interesting that we see the same names of the senators coming up with these bills. So I, I have to echo the comments of my colleagues, and I strongly approve of this letter that we're writing.
Thank you, Supervisor McCary. Supervisor Shacklean.
No, I don't have a comment.
Oh, that should--
No, I was getting ready for the vote.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. All right. So there has been a motion on the floor by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Vice Chair Townsend. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shacklean.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right. Next item we will take up in consent is item 12, and that is to reaffirm the findings of Board Resolution Number 2021-0990, that would allow the Board of Supervisors and its subcommittees to hold meetings remotely according to the modified Brown Act teleconferencing set for in-assembly Bill 361. Do we have members of the public wishing to speak at this time? Do we have members of the phone or Zoom to speak at this time?
Yes. Pamela Silva?
Yes, hello. As I, as I spoke on this last, last time, in the last meeting regarding the, the use of this Bill 361, and the abuse of this 361 is apparent in the city of Porterville, using it to cool public opinion and to stop them from assembling in person for redress of grievances. This is ripe for abuse. We've seen it already. It is unconstitutional. The Constitution does say we have the right to assemble, to peacefully assemble for redress of grievances. So I, I understand that you like this and you think we need it, but I'm telling you, it is unconstitutional, and it's abuse. And it tries to take away my right to, even though I'm doing conferencing right now, it is, it is helpful. But at some point, if it becomes necessary for us to show up, say, for instance, my phone died, and you guys know we're only gonna do this via teleconferencing, I will have no way to, to join in the meeting. I will be stopped. Or if you don't like what I'm saying, as they were doing in Porterville, you could just push a button and say, sorry, it's not working today. And meeting would go on without my comments. So no, I don't believe that, that this needs to be confirmed again. I think that it needs to be anything but confirmed. And I know it's gonna pass anyway. I know you guys, it was on the consent, and that's another thing. Putting these letters to Pam and the rest of the, the crazy people up there in Sacramento, it should have been, it should have been a public comment for each one. People need to know what you're doing, and it needs to be discussed. So I do appreciate the letters. Don't get me wrong. I, I hundred percent think that it's a good idea. But I also think that unless public gets more information, as Jimmy was saying earlier-- as Jimmy was saying earlier, this is not gonna go well. People don't know. They're too busy, they're working, they're raising their kids. We do need some public outreach, we do. And, you know, putting things on the consent agenda probably isn't gonna get you a lot of attention. So yeah, let us, let us know what we can do. You know, I'm always trying to give you good advice on what we the people want, because I am we the people. You guys work for us, we don't work for you. And while laws come down, you still have the right, if they're unconstitutional, not to follow them. And I implore you to look at going that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I will just share by clarifying that you do have a right to assemble as you so choose. This item is specific to meetings being held in public. And also just to share that we do have several committees and advisory committees under the jurisdiction of the county, where many are older Americans within Tulare County that may still not feel safe in terms of attending meetings. So this gives them the opportunity to do so. I also just, again, want to share that this item is for consideration, because again, there are times also where we, as a board, have not been able to make certain meetings, and so we've had to have this at our discretion. So I just wanted to share that this is of importance, because we are also looking at a lot of vacancies that we have on our boards, and, but this gives people an opportunity and a voice and a way to communicate in our meetings, especially for those who are older again and may not feel safe attending a meeting at this time.
Can I add something, Mr. Chair? I just also want to say, the Little Hoover Commission, which is an oversight entity within the state of California, has done a research over the last couple of years, and they've actually found an increase in public participation because of the opportunities for folks to remotely call in and whatnot to public meetings, also with board members being more accessible and more involved in the process. So I think this has been a good thing for folks out there. So with that, I would, if there's no other comments, I would move approval.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor. I will second that. And so there's been a motion on the floor by Supervisor Shucklian, seconded by myself, Eddie Valero. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
All right. We move on to item 27, and that is approve an agreement with Family Healthcare Network for vaccine administration in an amount not to exceed $200,000 retroactive from May 1, 2021, and ends upon the termination of both the state emergency declaration and local emergency declaration. So is there anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time?
We actually have Karen Elliott on Zoom.
Okay.
To present on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Karen Elliott, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, but I was here in case there was a public comment on it.
Okay. All right. Is there public comment?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Would you, did you want her to speak to it first? Yeah. If you'd like to introduce the item, Karen, and then we'd take public comment.
Absolutely. Thank you, Melinda, I'm sorry. Yes, so this is in agreement with Family Healthcare Network. You, in December 2020, vaccine administration came out for the COVID vaccine. We got very much rubbed up by around January in terms of getting our vaccines and getting it out to the public. We could not do that alone. We had to have our very valued healthcare partners that assisted us in this effort. And so we had many agreements going out into, with our healthcare partners who could assist in providing vaccinations, and they were going into the community, they were going by mobile services in terms of holding clinics. We received ELC monies in terms of to support these types of activities. And so through that funding source, we did, entered a contract or agreement with Family Healthcare Network so that they would be able to provide these vaccinations for the community. I know that it's a, we apologize for the lateness in coming in. Sometimes we have these agreements in place, we are going through a lot. I think that what had happened is maybe some things had not been signed. As you know, any agreement that goes before the board will not pay on anything prior to them, the board approving it. So at this time, they have been providing some of these vaccinations, and they will continue to do that in the community and help us. As soon as this agreement is approved, we can pay for any services they've provided so far.
Thank you. Thank you for that information and background. Now we will move to public comment. Are there any public comments in this room who wish to speak on this item? All right. Any members via Zoom or phone?
Yes, we have Pamela Silva.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
So, so I was listening to Karen Elliott just now, and she's saying that these vaccines you needed your health partners, and that they have been footing the bill this whole time. So the county owes them a lot of money, we need the funding to pay them. Where are they getting the money? That's an interesting thing to ask. I'd like to know, where are, where are the healthcare facilities, partners, getting the money? That's very strange, for a year worth of very expensive vaccines. And I would also say that while some people like the vaccines, I'll say it again, some people don't want them. Some people have been fired from their jobs for not being in an experiment. They denied them the ability to work, to raise their family, because they're not going to submit to an experiment. Now that's what this is. So are we just gonna gloss over that our county is giving out vaccines to people who are being forced, coerced? And they're not, there's no way you can have informed consent when it's either you eat, you know, food or not, because if you don't get the vaccine, you don't get the job. And I just don't see how informed consent, and nobody's gonna be held accountable if somebody dies from this. There's supposedly the PREP Act. That is wrong also. So, you know, look who you're in bed with and what you're taking money for. Look who's pushing these vaccines on our children. Do you really wanna be a part of that crimes against humanity? I don't, and I have to speak out against it. So that's me saying it's wrong, stop doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam Silva. All right. Any other callers at this time or people on Zoom?
No other callers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Shucklian, second. I'll second that. So there is a motion on the floor, floor by Shucklian, seconded by Valero. All those in favor, or roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. We will now move on to our timed items. In the timed items, we will go in order of presentation. So item five is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the formation of Assessment District Number 21-789-Goshen to fund the maintenance of the storm drain system improvements in Goshen Village.
Yes, good morning. Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. One of the more exciting topics here for the day, storm drains and assessment districts. So with this item, it's a bit procedural in nature, but it is a good example of economies of scale. We'll be combining a couple of existing systems together and eventually reducing the overall cost to the property owners there. So this is a combination of two existing assessment districts and addition of a couple additional parcels into a third for track 789 within the community of Goshen. As a little bit of background, just assessment districts are established to pay for certain public improvements, in this case, storm drain facilities for a particular location. Assessments are included as part of the property owner's annual tax bill. The specific location here today is track 789, located between avenues 308 and 310, east of Road 72 in the community of Goshen. When at buildout, the total residential lot size is 73 amongst all three phases. There are four new neighborhood streets in this development, and it was built in three phases here. You can see the location on the map, south of Betty Drive, east of the railroad tracks. Here's the existing two phases, and then the third phase in blue, kind of in the middle on the north side there. Again, there's some history. The development started in 2018, 2019, so Assessment District 18789-Goshen serves Phase One, has an annual assessment of $55 per parcel. The second phase, Phase Two, has an assessment of $70 per parcel. Upon joining the two and adding the third, the new joint district would be 21789-Goshen with a total cost of $25.92 per lot, so significant reduction for existing property owners there. Same services provided, storm drain facilities, maintenance of those infrastructure. The, to do this, we'd have to go through a bit of a procedural action. Today's meeting is part of that. Ultimately, there is a vote by property owners and a public hearing which will be held May 3 to actually count and tabulate those votes, but we're, this is just informational to let the property owners know that this is in progress here. Here would be the formal map of the three combined phases for the final assessment district. A little bit of math on the numbers here. Again, Phase One was 55, Phase Two was $70. Upon formulation of the new district, it would be $25.92. So again, a discount for the existing property owners. And list there of a few of the activities that the assessment would cover. Procedurally, on February 1, your board did authorize us to proceed with these, this process. We set the public meeting today, the public hearing on the 3 of May. We've issued letter notices and ballots have been mailed out to each record of owner, record owner. And then we're holding, like I say, the public meeting and the hearing in the next few weeks. That's really the summary. Quick, down simple, if you have any questions, happy to answer that. But again, recognizing that combining these districts together here results in a savings for the property owners.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. I mean, I think this is a great example of a model that should be emulated in other parts of the county, where it's possible to have economies of scale like this, fees go down for everyone. These public improvements in this infrastructure does not come with no annual cost or no maintenance. It is required to maintain these resources and these infrastructure items, and if more people participate, everyone pays less. So very supportive of this, think it's a great model, we should definitely look at in other parts of the county.
And that's the question I was gonna ask prior to that, but thanks for sharing this. Have we seen this done in other parts of the county already, or is this something that we can kind of seek to have in the future?
There certainly is opportunity for this. Typically, this is done when a development is phased out, so we've got multifamily or a multi-housing development going on here, split and over phases over years. So you would typically, as the developer comes in, they'll build the infrastructure in the first phase, those few houses in Phase One are then on the hook for everything there, and then as it phases out later, the prices are reduced. So there is opportunity to do that in other locations. Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Bring it back to the board for consideration. Move approval?
Second that motion.
All right, so there's been a motion on the floor by Vice Chair Townsend, seconded by Supervisor, Supervisor Vanderpool. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair, we, I do not have any public comments, but just to make sure there's nobody here for public comment.
Sorry. Let me go back to, are there public comments here in the chamber? All right, are there any public comments via Zoom or telephone?
I, no.
All right, sorry about that. All right, now we move to the motion, which was by Vice Chair Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
All right. We move on to a similar item for the same community, and that is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the formation of Assessment District Number 21-789-R-Goshen to fund the maintenance of the public streets and roadways in Goshen Village.
Yes, thank you once again, Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. The only real difference between this and the prior, and I think we've got the old presentation up there, sorry, is that this is for road maintenance, so denoted by the R after 789. That and the price or the cost of the assessments is primarily the only difference between the prior storm drain district. So I'll skim through this quickly, and feel free to stop me if there's any questions. Again, for track 789, two current assessment districts, wrapping it up into a third as the project is phased out. As mentioned, this will be specific to maintenance of roads rather than storm drain facilities. Again, 25 lots in Phase One, 25 lots in Phase Two, and 23 lots in Phase Three. Same location here in the community of Goshen. There are the three phases soon to be combined. Prices here on this one, a little bit higher than for storm drain, roads are a little bit more expensive to maintain. Phase One currently pays $149 a year as part of their annual assessment. Phase Two pays $89.06. As joined, all three combined, the total price would be $76.82 per parcel. The map of the completed assessment district upon finalization, here's our cost breakdown. You can see this is developed over a period of 30 years. We look at what the future maintenance costs would be for the roadways that have been constructed here. We foresee a slurry seal every five years roughly, AC overlay every 30 years, and then overhead or administration. And what that breaks down to per lot per year is $76.82.
Awesome.
As part of the process, again, your board authorized us to do this back in February. Letters and notices were mailed out, we'll be receiving those up through the public hearing on May 3. And again, the total price for, per parcel would be $76.82. So with that, happy to, again, answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues at this time? Okay. Any questions from the public in the chambers first? On Zoom or telephone?
No calls.
All right. So then I will bring it back to the board for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
All right, thank you. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion on the floor by Supervisor McCary, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McCary.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
All right. Thank you for your work on this, Resource Management Agency. We are going to move to item seven, and this is a continued public hearing, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the vacation of a portion of the alley in Block 73 of the Goshen Town site. And so I want to read a script that is to continue in terms of the hearing, and that is, before we open the continued public hearing, can I please have the clerk provide instructions to members of the public on our temporary procedures for today's hearing?
Thank you, Chair Valero. This item is a continued public hearing from January 25, 2022. To members of the public, if you are participating in person, please complete and submit a comment card, provide your name and agenda item number seven. If you are participating via Zoom, please use the Q and A feature to submit your requests and provide your name and agenda item number seven. If you are participating via Zoom, please use the Q and A feature to submit your requests and provide your name and agenda item number seven. If you are participating via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Once your name is called on, you will be connected to the boardroom to address the board in the same manner as if you are here in person. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, your statements will go out on the live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to call in, you may also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Email should include the sender's name and address for the record. Email should include the following in the subject, agenda item number seven, and send to the clerk of the board's email address at clerkoftheboard@teleroyecounty.ca.gov. Public comments will not be read, but will, but will be made part of the record every seed before the close of public testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we will now take up agenda item seven, a continued public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of the alley in block seventy-three of the Goshen Townsite. The public hearing is now open. We will start with staff's request to continue this item to April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and then move on to board discussion of the vote to continue this item.
Thank you, once again, Ree Chankey with the Resource Management Agency. You'll recall that under this item, the board was requested to vacate an alley in Goshen. Due to concerns from Cal Water, who owns water distribution lines in the alley, the hearing was continued to today from January twenty-fifth. The, since that time, Cal Water staff has met with some of the adjoining property owners to come to an understanding. However, this effort is still ongoing, and I would request that we continue the item until April twelfth to allow details to be finalized. I do know that both Cal Water and some of the adjoining property owners have had, I think, substantial discussions, they're making good progress. But there are some implications to some of the remaining property owners that are affected there. And we want to make sure that before we do anything final, that everyone is aware of what those potential implications would be. So I know that Cal Water is here, I believe Cal Water's here, and the property owners are here. So they may want to provide an update on where things have progressed thus far. But with that, I would request that we do continue this for another month or so, so that we can wrap things up and make sure everything is, is copacetic for all parties involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that you're requesting to continue to April twelfth at nine thirty AM?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. So do any of the members of the board have any questions for staff regarding the continuance of this item?
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment, I appreciate the fact that Cal Water and the property owner have been communicating. And I think it's very important that what we are doing here is completely dependent upon that relationship and that communication there. And I'm glad that that's taking place, and in fact, RMA has been facilitating some of that conversation. So definitely appreciate it, and I hope we're able to come to a favorable resolution.
Thank you, Supervisor Macari?
I just want to echo Supervisor Vanderpoel's comments, I was gonna, again, give accolades to everyone involved in working together, RMA. You know, normally the county's been accused of just running people over, but this proves that we're willing to work with everyone to come to a conclusion that will please, that will help all, so I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, and I too thank staff and the parties involved in making sure that we can come to a resolution. So at this time, we will now take comments from members of the public. If any members of the public wish to speak on this continuance. Any members via phone or a Zoom?
No comments.
Okay. All right, so then, Madam Clerk, do we have, or at this time, I will entertain final board discussion and or motion taking action on the continuance of this matter to April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, timed at nine thirty AM.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you, motion has been made by Supervisor Shucklian, seconded by Vice Chair Townsend, roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right, that concludes agenda item seven, which will be continued to April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for that. We now move on to our untimed items. Our untimed items include, the first one, which is fifty, the request from the General Services Agency to approve the purchase of real property located at eighteen thirty-nine South Newcombe in the city of Porterville.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, before we proceed, I believe Supervisor Townsend has a statement to read.
Oh, yes. Thanks for jumping in there, okay. I have a financial conflict of interest regarding this agenda item because I have received or will receive income from Gary Day, the owner of eighteen thirty-nine South Newcombe. Gary Day is a client of mine in my business, and I have an ongoing work with him now. I will therefore not be participating in any governmental decision regarding this item. The clerk is requested to make this announcement part of the official record of today's meeting. All right, thank you for sharing that.
See ya. So you gotta go in that closet.
All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Brit, Ms. Flores, Jaclyn Wells, General Services Agency Property Manager. This matter is to consider staff recommendations for the purchase of real property located at eighteen thirty-nine South Newcombe in the city of Porterville for a cash price of no less than two million eight hundred thousand dollars. The proposed real property acquisition is a two point eight five acre lot improved with an eighteen thousand square foot pre-engineered metal building with onsite secured parking. The property is currently occupied by the US Forest Service, who is in the process of constructing new headquarters at its Porterville Works Center, and is estimated to relocate to that new location in July of twenty twenty-two. Should your board approve the proposed acquisition, the property will be developed into a new sheriff's substation for the Porterville area. The property is ideal for a new substation due to its size, existing use, amenities, such as secured parking and its location, which is near the Porterville Municipal Airport, the South County Detention Facility, and the New Eagle Mountain Casino. Escrow is anticipated to close by July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, after the Forest Service has relocated to its new location. And with that, I will hand it back to the chair for the board's consideration.
All right, so any of my colleagues wishing to speak at this time?
I just, I would just want to echo what you said as far as the location is ideal. I don't know so much about the casino. But with the detention facility, the airport and whatnot, and I'm in full support of this.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Did you, huh? Oh yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to the public. So any public comment at this time, those of you that are in chambers? All right, no public comment in chambers, do we have any comment via Zoom or phone?
No comments.
Okay, so I bring it back to the board for consideration.
I would move approval.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor by Supervisor Shucklian, a second by Supervisor Macari, roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend is absent, so four, zero.
Four, zero, thank you. We will now proceed to item fifty-one. And that is a request from the General Services Agency to approve the purchase of a one point two eight acre portion of real property located at one fifty-nine South Valente Road, Early Mart. And so you may proceed, and thank you for coming back.
Good morning again, Jaclyn Wells, General Services Agency Property Manager. This matter is to consider staff recommendations for the purchase of real property located at one five nine South Valente in the unincorporated community of Early Mart for a cash price of no less than four hundred and ten thousand dollars. The proposed real property acquisition is a one point two eight acre portion of a five acre lot improved with a three thousand seven hundred and squa- excuse me, three thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot pre-engineered metal building consisting of nineteen fifties, one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of office space and one thousand eight hundred square feet of unfinished shop area. Should your board approve the proposed acquisition, the property will be developed into a new sheriff's substation for the Early Mart area. The property is ideal due to its location and size, and with enough land to support the construction of secured parking. Escrow is anticipated to close by July thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. And with that, I will hand it back to the chair for the board's consideration.
All right, thank you, I bring it back to the board for any comments? All right.
Mr. Chair, only comment I will make is just that I think this is a great move. I want to thank the sheriff and his plans for coverage in the south part of Tulare County. I believe that Early Mart has a significant demand for service on a regular basis. This also puts the sheriff's department in closer proximity to Alpa, Allensworth, and other areas that are further isolated. And I know that we will continue to serve all communities in the southern part of the county, regardless of whether or not they have a specific substation located in the community. And this will not reduce any level of service provided within the communities of southern Tulare County.
Great, thank you.
With that, I would move for approval if there's nothing further from the public or members of the board.
All right, so we now take it back to the public, anyone in this chamber is wishing to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom or phone?
No comments.
Okay, so there's been a motion on the floor by Supervisor Vanderpoel, seconded by Supervisor Macari, roll call, please.
Supervisor Macari.
Aye.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Aye.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Aye.
Supervisor Valero.
Aye.
Supervisor Townsend.
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right. Thank you for that. We will now move on to our board matter requests, and this is item fifty-two. Do any of my colleagues want to make a referral to staff to have a matter of business be considered for a future agenda? All right, none at this time. Madam Counsel, do we have a need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is need for closed session, items A through E are off calendar. The balance of the agenda will be heard in closed session, I do anticipate an announcement out.
All right, thank you for that. So with that being said, thank you for attending and participating in today's Board of Supervisors meetings. Please be safe and press forward, thank you. Yeah, because we have an announcement.
You better start wearing your vest. Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, she, if she, are these off? If she hates so much that people can't even follow in, why wasn't she?